I'm just reading the chat here. We got a lot going on already. That's so great.
Wonderful. That's great. We're so excited to have all of you here. Hey Laura. Alright, so we are live and I'm going to drop in the chat box the link for everyone to share from your own pages if you like to. We're going live on Facebook. Abigail, you can start us off and then we can jump right in.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Welcome everyone. We are so excited to have you here with us. This is Social Work Month. This is International Social Work Day. We are here to talk about social workers who run for office and why now is more important than ever to have social workers help us rebuild New York City in 2022. So, we're very excited to be here. I think what our next move should be to go around the panel and everybody can introduce themselves. We're honored to have Assembly Member Matilda Frantes with us, so why don't we start with her? And then because we're not in person, I'll just call out the next person because everybody's screen looks a little different. And then I'll share about myself. So, Assembly Member.
Thank you so much for having me, Abigail, and thank you to all of the organizers of tonight's event. My staff and I know that anytime something is going on pertaining to social work or social work, I don't have to be asked twice. I'll definitely find a way to be there. And that's how I felt when I found out about tonight's event. I said, "I don't know what's on my calendar, but I gotta find my way to this event because it's very, very important." It's nice to see some familiar faces. Nice to see mayoral candidate Diana Morales. What an incredible day today is to remind the world why social workers are essential, why the work that we do is so valuable. I'm really looking forward to engaging with tonight's panelists and talking about what makes our work so important. Thank you for having me.
Great, thank you. Diane, you're next.
Yep, sorry, I was on mute. Still haven't quite figured that out. Hi, everybody. It's such a pleasure to be here with all of you. Happy Social Work Month. It is quite an honor to be included among this illustrious group of peers. I'm happy to be here. I am candidate for mayor. And, you know, just here to continue disrupting our city in the most loving way possible so that we can continue to strive to live up to the rhetoric of becoming the greatest city in the world. Because I believe that the only way we can truly measure that is by the status of our most vulnerable. So, thank you for having me. It's a pleasure to be here. Looking forward to the conversation. Thank you.
Tricia.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for having me be a part of this. Happy Social Work Month. My name is Tricia Shimomura. I am proudly running in District 5 for City Council. My son is Teddy and he is sitting right next to me eating dinner. So if you hear any noises in the background, that's just all part of the package. I'm a proud Japanese Puerto Rican woman of color. I'm a mom. I'm a social worker. And that's how I introduce myself every time because these are the kind of guiding parts of my identity that I am hoping will guide me as how I govern in the City Council. It is amazing to be a part of this panel. Social workers look for comprehensive, long-term solutions. They fight for their clients. They fight for their communities. And they empower those who are most vulnerable. With that, I'll leave you guys be and I'm looking forward to being part of the conversation.
I love having the real moment, right? This is what it's like to live in New York City. This is what it's like to be a mom and running for office. Ingrid.
Hey, everybody. I'm Ingrid Gomez. I am running to represent District 21 in Queens, which includes the neighborhoods of Jackson Heights, East Elm Hurst, Corona, Lefrak City, and Elm Hurst. I am a proud social worker. I've been a social worker for over 17 years now. I've worked in the community that I'm looking to represent for the last seven years. So, that is also a deep privilege for me to be able to represent the people I've been serving all along. It is an honor to be with all of you and I really look forward to a robust and interesting discussion amongst colleagues. So, thank you to our guests as well. Thank you for caring and being interested in this interesting and important conversation. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Shaniqua.
Good evening, everyone. Happy Social Work Month. I'm Shaniqua Moore, one of the organizers for tonight. I'm also a candidate for City Council in District 12, which is the Northeast Bronx. I too am a very proud mother. I've been a social worker for over a decade. And I'm also a nonprofit leader, so I run a nonprofit organization. I raise girls and boys in New York City that provides essential social work services to young people in public school education. I'm really excited to be here this evening and to be amongst you amazing phenomenal social workers and excited for the conversation.
Great, thank you. Before I share a little bit about myself, let's talk to Social Work Vote. Sarah Jamkach.
Sure thing. Thanks, Abigail. Hi, everyone. My name is Sarah, pronoun she/her's. I am a current candidate at Columbia University School of Social Work. I will be graduating this May. I and a lot of, thank you, I and a lot of wonderful students at Columbia started the initiative called Social Work Votes. We are a group of students trying to break into the university social work macro field. We've been doing a lot of civic engagement, especially for the last election in 2020. But now we're focusing on City Council races. We hope to engage social work students in field agencies and conversations like these. And we're so happy to be here, to hear and talk and be a part of this conversation. Thank you so much.
Great. Emilio from PACE.
Hello, everybody. My name is Emilio Tavares and I am one of the interim co-chairs for PACE, which is the political action for candidate elections. It's the political arm for NASW NYC. And I'm very excited to be here. I'm an immigrant. I've been a social worker only for two years, so it feels very short. And I actually do macro practice for a living. I work for a national nonprofit dedicated to ending hunger. So I'm very excited to just engage in this conversation. I'll just go to Berlatt, who is the co-chair.
Hi, happy Social Work Month. My name is Berlatt. I am a member of the National Association of Social Worker on the Board. And I am also a co-chair with Emilio. He just said it. If you don't know about PACE, PACE is a political action for candidate election. What we do, we endorse and financially support candidates as long as you support NASW policy. So, I am happy to be part of the conversation.
Great. Thank you so much. And Susan, you're from Fordham.
I am. I am a MSW alum, but I'm also a PhD candidate right now. And I am an administrator at the school. I help coordinate the online MSW program at Fordham. I do grassroots community development. I study how and why we come together in community, specializing with intimate partner violence and those returning from incarceration.
Great. Thank you. Okay, yeah, thank you to all the organizations for being here and supporting us this evening. As I mentioned before, I'm Abigail Martin. I'm a co-host along with Shaniqua. I'm running for City Council in the 11th District, which is the Northwest Bronx. I'm a social worker. I am a mother. I am a military wife. My background is in forensics and child welfare. And I got into this race. I decided to run for City Council when COVID hit and we saw what it did to the city and what it did to the Bronx in particular. And we're focused on the economic recovery from COVID and rebuilding an affordable New York City that is just and equitable for all. I am a relationship builder. It's what I do. And I just want to take a minute to share this story. So, I learned about Shaniqua in December and I saw that she was running in the district next to me. And I think an ad came up. And as soon as I saw it, I immediately started reaching out to her. It was like, "We have to connect. How can I help you? You have a special. It's in December. What can I do? Can I make phone calls?" And we just started this friendship and this relationship and have been supporting each other ever since. We got on the phone a little while ago back in February and we said, "You know what? March is Social Work Month. Let's do an event together." And we've built relationships with Ingrid and with Tricia and Diane. And we said, "Let's do it all together. Let's talk about social workers who run. Let's talk about why we need more social workers in elected office." And so here we are. That's how tonight came together. So, why don't we start with that? Let's start with why social workers? Why is it a smart idea? I, again, because we're not next to each other, I guess I just have to call out. So perhaps Assembly Member Frantes, you could share with us, why do you think social workers should be in office? And also, I think people here would be interested to know about your path that led you to social work. What was your trajectory that led you to this profession?
Abigail, thank you again for having me. Really excited to be here. Always happy to share my stories. Sometimes I wonder if folks will get tired of hearing it because I share it everywhere that I go. I am a multi-degree earner in social work from the undergraduate level all the way to the doctoral level. Started the NYU School of Social Work many years ago when I was 16 because I knew in high school that I wanted to be a social worker. And I knew that from asking a lot of questions, from talking to the adults around me. And I realized that I had multiple passions. When I envisioned what I wanted to do when I got older, I knew that I wanted to be, I used to sort of like look up to civil rights activists and people who were leaders in their communities. So many people, leaders of color, men and women. And I said, "You know, I'd like to do that kind of work" because I noticed that my community had long been marginalized, had long been disenfranchised. But I also knew that I was interested in mental health, which I continue to be interested in today because I realized that a lot of people were suffering and that there was always a lot of stigma around mental health. And I said to myself, "I probably won't be able to connect these two things." But then when I started asking about it, I was told, "Actually, you can because social work will give you that platform." So, I feel very blessed to have learned that information from a very young age and I just kind of went straightforward and did my BSW, did my MSW. And many of you know that I started getting involved in my community right after grad school. Went away for a bit, came back to Coney Island, where I had been living since I was a little girl, and started a one-stop-shop, multi-service, social service agency, which was a labor of love. It was a love letter from me to my community where I looked around. And that organization was built with my toolkit, which I believe I received from my social work studies, looking at what people needed, looking at how people were hurting. And I started, you know, a financial literacy program, the first LGBTQ program in Coney Island, the first Veterans Outreach Program, which I still am very quite proud of, and a number of other services, which frankly had just not been offered at the time. While I was there at my nonprofit running that, I also founded two anti-gun violence coalitions over the last several years because gun violence has been a perennial problem as well in the community. So that's kind of how I got to this seat because I was already active in the community. You know, when I think about it now in terms of why social workers should be running, I feel like shouting it from the rooftop. I frankly just can't think of a better group of people who should be running, who should be running because we are people who put ourselves on the front lines. We are fighting every day for a better world, for a more just world, a fairer world. And it's funny when you think about it, you know, with all the progress that humans have made over the years, we are still not where we need to be. As a people, as a society, we're still fighting for justice. It's not like this antiquated idea. We're not fully free. We're not on equal pairing. You know, women are still not paid as much as men. People of color are still not treated the same way as white Americans. You know, we have so many problems, poverty, hunger. So there's really no better group of people to be aware of these issues, who put their lives on the line for these issues. So we need social workers in office. I want to leave people with this thought that I shared during my inauguration speech. And whenever I get a chance, I like to share this thought with people, which has to do with how we use the halls of government. You know, when we think about Jim Crow, we think about, you know, things that we went through in the past institutionalized racism. A lot of people think it was, you know, everything was happening on the streets. You know, the people were being mistreated, whether it was with Japanese internment or other people who were historically oppressed here in the United States. But no, it was happening through policy. It was state sanctioned. We use the halls of government, as I like to say, to oppress people, to deny people of their rights. And so when we think about flipping that on its head and we think about reclaiming the power of government, reclaiming the power of what the halls of government can be used for, we can now use the halls of government to flip that upside down, restore rights to people, to correct all of the injustices in the past, and to dream of the better world that we don't have right now. And we can do that by running for office, whether you're running for mayor, running for president, running for City Council. And so thank you to everybody who's here who's running because I really believe that that's where we can affect change.
Great. Thank you so much. Yes, snaps to that, absolutely. Let's move it over to Diane Morales.
Hi, everybody. So what was the framing question? Just so I'm sure I'm answering it.
Well, we kind of had two. So what led you to social work? What was your trajectory that got you to social work and then why social workers are a good fit for elected office?
Got it. So, you know, my journey to social work was a little bit of a windy one. I think that I've talked about this story publicly a couple of times. You know, I'm also an educator by training and I think that there was a moment in my career as a classroom teacher. I was, you know, I wasn't a trained teacher, actually. I was teaching in what then was a size seven classroom, a specialized instructional environment, seven, at the same public school where I had gone to kindergarten. And, you know, they were, you know, back then, those students were the ones that were considered the most difficult to teach. And, but I loved my kids and, you know, had a really good relationship with them, but I didn't know how to teach. So I was an overly enthusiastic, eager, lots of questions kind of person, you know, that would walk into the school building with all sorts of ideas every day and want to talk to my assistant principal for special ed about, "How do I do this? And this is, you know, what do you think about this?" And all those kinds of things. And there was a day in the spring where she said to me, "I don't care what you do with those kids. Keep them in the classroom. Keep the doors shut and keep them quiet." And that was the day that I realized actually that my being a really good teacher, which I wasn't, but aspired to be, in that classroom was not going to be enough if there were people in the system who had the ability to think that way and feel that way and respond that way about my black and brown students. And so I made the decision at that point in time that I needed to figure out what the path was to actually have a much larger scale impact. And I sort of started at that point in pursuit of something. I knew I had to go back to school, but I didn't know if it was education or, you know, social work, quite frankly. But I found a program at Columbia that provided sort of an intersection of, I think, social work practices and policy and administration and sort of big picture scale opportunities. I really wanted the kind of business acumen, you know, the ability to do the analysis, to manage budgets, to do all that, but also to do it within the framework of humanity and people's needs. And so I sort of stumbled down that pathway, I think, because it felt like the best. It seemed like the best option at the time. And truth be told, you know, I never, I never looked back. It did give me the opportunity and the skills, quite frankly, to, you know, to have, to begin to have impact at a larger scale, to begin to sort of design what, you know, what were kind of workarounds to some of the things that Matilda was talking about when she was talking about, you know, the government, the work that the government does to oppress people and sort of perpetuate the status quo and the work that we have to do on the ground and in community to help people either navigate those challenges or work around those barriers. And I got this sort of ability to enter that space, to begin to do that work, to sort of counter that. And so, but, you know, I think ultimately the issue is that we've got to recognize that it's not enough. It's not enough for us to help other people navigate those existing barriers and challenges. We have to find a way to actually take those challenges, take those barriers on and dismantle them. That is where, that is where the real change happens for our communities over the long term. And so, you know, part of why I think that, you know, people with social work training and social workers are particularly well-equipped to run for office and represent and advocate for people is because that's exactly what we're trained to do from day one. And the idea of doing that at scale and the idea of being able to do that in a way that confronts and really begins to reckon with the structural and systemic, you know, longstanding issues that have oppressed communities for so long is exactly what we need. And this is exactly the breakthrough moment in time, I think, for that to happen. Because what we've seen over the course of the last year is, you know, nothing new except that COVID-19 has really, really exacerbated and shown a bright spotlight on these disparities and equities and injustices that have for so long persisted in specific communities. And now we are, you know, particularly given the 2021 in New York City, the landscape in New York City, given, you know, this alignment of this diverse coalition of folks that have come together over the last year to stand up for justice and this window of time with these elections and with this unprecedented number of openings and possibilities. I think that the intersection of those two things provides a very unique opportunity for us to change the trajectory of New York City moving forward and to really transform the condition of the very communities that we have been trained to and dedicated our lives to serving and uplifting in a whole different kind of way. And so I think this is very, I recognize that this is a, there are, our communities have been pushed further to the margin and further into crisis. And also, it is true that there is a really unique opportunity of hope and promise that 2021 represents in terms of possibility for change. So, I'll stop there.
Well said. Thank you so much. I'm feeling very, I'm feeling hopeful. I feel hope amongst my fellow panelists. Thanks. I'd love to hear from Tricia and then Ingrid as well.
Yeah, I mean, I will, I just want to feed off of what Diane just said, I think was so powerful and right on the mark. One thing that I'll just add to this is that I really do feel like my social work background has given me a framework through which I view everything else from. I'm a systems person. I realize very, and I also got my degree from NYU and I also got my, so a connection there to Matilda and worked in a school. And it was while I was a school social worker that similarly, it made me think of this when Diane was speaking, I realized that there are systems that are seemingly designed to allow some to fail. And really, it's only by extraordinary measures that anyone breaks out of that system and where, when you put particularly children in just cycles that just don't seem to let up. And that's, that's how I transitioned really from being a clinical, in clinical setting and having a very clinical framework to having a more systems-focused framework, thinking about how we look at these, how we address and fix these systems that just seem to overlap. A broken housing system, a broken education system, a broken criminal justice system. All of these things interlock and are really, I think, how I view problems. And I credit all of that to my social work training. And so I, for all of the same reasons that were already said, I couldn't agree more. Social workers were made to be legislators. They were made to be at the decision-making table because they make room for others and they carry with them the voices and lived experiences of those who just haven't been recognized enough. I can't help but notice some of the questions in the chat and I just want to mention one more thing. I run a small women's organization called She Will Rise. It's a small group. It's focused on helping connect women to professional development opportunities to help them not run for office, but get ready to run for office, to maintain financial literacy, to have better understanding of who represents them. And I can't tell you how many times I talked to a young woman, a smart woman, who comes to me and says, "I think I want to run for office, but I think I need to go to law school first." All the time, all the time. I talk to young people who say, who see, particularly women, who see themselves as underqualified because they don't have a law degree and they want to be in public service, but they feel like they can't because the only ones who are allowed to be in public service are those who have some sort of law degree. And I, and I just, I'm constantly fighting against this and I feel like I can because my husband's a lawyer. And so I, but I feel like I can say, you know, confidently that I'm very proud of my background as a social worker. I think, I think it will make me a stronger legislator. I think it will make me a stronger advocate for my community. You do not need a law degree. With all due respect to the lawyers out there, you don't need a law degree to do this work. I think that social workers really do, as everyone else said beforehand, they look at the intersection of these systems. They look at the intersection of problems. They come up with, again, long-term solutions and they carry with them their experiences of their communities. So, I'll stop with that. But again, it's a pleasure to, and I echo everything that's already been said. I think that our training has uniquely qualified us for this space.
Hi, I think, Abigail, you want me to take, right, to take on? So, Tricia, I actually want to kind of piggyback off of what you said. I remember when I was beginning to explore this idea of running for office, I spoke with someone who is currently an elected. And that person told me, "I think you should probably go to law school first before you jump, you know, jump that and make that decision to run for office." And at the moment, I was very shocked in a way to hear that. But indeed, we do not need to be lawyers in order to run for office. And so I am so excited that this year, I think we have a record number of social workers running for office. I don't believe like in the last whatever 10, 20 years, we've had so many people step up and say, "No, I want to be leading our community because I know from experience what the needs are in this community, in our communities." So, for me, my trajectory to social work and then to where I am now really started in education as well as Diane. So, I was, after college, I started working at this, it's called Talent Search Upward Bound. I don't know if you've heard of those programs, but those are to help first-generation, you know, kids get into college. So, a lot of these kids were children of immigrants. A lot of these kids were low-income. And myself, I am an immigrant from Columbia. I also was raised by a single parent to three kids. I was raised in the South Bronx. And so I knew from personal experience, you know, working with these kids, what the struggles were, what it was to face these kind of barriers. For example, how do we write a college essay? How do we file for financial aid? So those were the things that we were helping kids with. And we also took them to college on college trips. So, we were exposing them to worlds that they were not, had never been exposed to. And so that's really what started my trajectory to social work. And so I felt that at the time, I wanted to get more training and therefore I went to Hunter College School of Social Work. I'm a very proud Hunter alum. And I really appreciate that experience a lot because their take is on community, community organizing. They also had, you know, individual casework, family work as well, which is where I majored in that. But I really appreciate that they do more than just casework. They focus on policy. They work, focus on community organizing. And so that was important to me. And so, just kind of fast forward, I also went to Ackerman Institute for the Family. I wanted to get more training in working with families and couples. And again, that training led me to work with a lot of immigrant, a lot of immigrant communities throughout the city. So I worked in Manhattan and Brooklyn and I am here in Queens. And so like I mentioned from the beginning, about seven years ago, I started working for the Child Center of New York and I've been working in the community that I serve. Just like Tricia said, you know, I think that many of our people, many of our immigrant families... um, are constantly dealing with different systems, right? That oftentimes they don't understand, they don't have the language for, they have no advocates, you know, to really lead them through these systems. So whether it's housing, healthcare, on dealing with the criminal justice system, all these different systems can be very overwhelming and obviously many are broken as Tricia mentioned. So for me, you know, to be a social worker in this community, which was the most impacted community in the city, um, we had the largest number of people who died from COVID-19. We had over 470 people die. Uh, thousands got sick, you know, and, and many, many suffered food insecurity because they lost their jobs, et cetera. There was a, a recent New York Times article that came out that said 51% of Corona residents tested positive for COVID-19 antibodies. So if you think about that, half of the population of the community I want to represent was positive for COVID. You know, so those kinds of things are not only, um, you know, it's, 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 it's a systemic issue, right? People can't afford housing, so they live two, three families per unit. And what happens? You're an essential worker, right? You have to work as a taxi driver, as a restaurant worker, as a delivery worker. You come back, you know, to the home that you're sharing with two or three families, you're gonna, you know, everyone's gonna get infected with COVID. And so what, what I see is that social workers, our training, our worldview can really be impactful in this work because we know what policies need to change. I know this community needs affordable housing, right? Not affordable housing for, you know, with AMI for the entire city, but for this community, which is quite different. You know, at the average income here, um, in Corona is $44,000, but I believe it's less than that for a family of three. So we have to consider how all these systems impact the daily lives of people here. Right? So we, I think again, you know, for me, um, just being able to serve this community and seeing the need, especially over the last year, um, really propelled me even more to want to run for office. And so I hope to have that privilege to represent my community. I'll stop there.
Thank you so much. Shaniqua.
Yeah, yeah, this is really great. I may join this conversation. So I, I was thinking as I was listening to all the panelists and I wanted to start out by saying, I believe that social work is not just a profession, but I believe that it is a calling. Um, I believe that we have a huge task. Our task is to push humanity forward. We do that through so many different ways, whether it's one-on-one, working with clients, whether it's advocating on a legislative level. Our job is really to push humanity forward. And so my journey to social work started right after undergraduate school. I was working at Bowery Residence Committee. And, um, you know, in that position, I realized that what we were doing wasn't quite working. Um, and I started to think about things on a more larger level and in a macro level and started to realize that something was quite wrong with policies. Um, and, and, and that the policies that were being passed were not being passed in the best, in the best favor and the best interest of the population that I serve in, and especially in, in where I come from, right? So, you know, I went on to trying to understand how I could affect change and how I can sort of change policy. And that's where I went into social work at Columbia University. Um, I studied policy there and I completely fell in love with it and I've never turned back. And that was, that was in 2009 or so however long that was, I've been on this, um, on this career path in policy. So, you know, for me, it's, it's very personal. For someone that's grown up in the South Bronx who has experienced public school education, who's grown up with a single mom who raised six of us on her own, you know, and, and went through that, that typical story of being a black girl that lived in the South Bronx, not having access to a lot of these resources and not quite understanding why. Um, but being able to, to come from out of those experiences and to bring those lived experiences into my profession along with my education, I think is so powerful and I think it brings that, that other lens to it. Um, I, I, you know, as I mentioned earlier, I run a nonprofit organization. I have the privilege of working with dozens of public schools throughout New York City advocating for school social work services because social work is really crucial. Um, I, I'm excited to be a candidate for city council, running in my home, running in the Bronx where I grew up, where I went to high school, you know, and it's, it's a privilege. I think that our work again is, is huge. One of the things I want to leave with in this particular question is that I, I think what really is impactful about us as social workers is that our entire soul is in it. We see that when we fight for our clients, we've done the work, right? And a lot of times our, our value is second guessed, right? Sometimes people don't really understand what we do or they don't understand the training or the value of social work. But I believe what really stands us out is that our entire soul is in everything that we do and we do, we truly do the work.
Yes, sorry. And not only that, but social workers are trained to respond in a crisis. And that's what we do. And our training, um, sets us up to have a deeper understanding of the issues that are impacting all of us. We don't look, we don't work in silos. We don't think in silos. We look at all of the factors that are contributing to a problem. And then when we come up with solutions, we look at the impact of those solutions. And I think that's what makes us so valuable. I think you're right, Shaniqua. Social work is often a misunderstood profession. People hear social work and they either imagine that you're a caseworker with files on your desk up to the ceiling, or they imagine that you're a therapist. And the truth is, social work is such a versatile profession. There are so many different ways that we can impact change. We're change agents. Um, there's so many different populations that we can work with, different jobs, and that's why I love this profession. What led me to this profession was growing up in a family fraught with mental illness. And my struggle to really understand mental illness, I went to social work school. I assumed I was going to be a therapist. My second year placement was at CASA, which stands for Court Appointed Special Advocates in the Bronx Family Court. And our role would be to advocate for children in foster care. And in that role as an advocate, I realized that I could use my voice to, to lift up those that needed advocacy, to, to speak to family court judges, to fight with foster care agencies for better services, higher rates, to help my youth get what they needed when they were aging out of foster care. And that's what I fell in love with, that, that advocacy role. And, and I think that that translates very well to being an elected official because we are running to represent our community, to advocate on behalf of, to lift up and fight together for a better future. Um, and so every, there's, you know, everybody, uh, had so many comments and I, I, there's nothing else that I could say, but I, um, I'm feeling very inspired. And did we just lose Shaniqua? She was going to move forward, but I think we lost her. Okay. So while we're waiting for her to come back, um, let's just, let's take some questions from the, from the panel. Diane, I know that you're on a time crunch. Do you have time? Is there a certain question that you saw on the panel that you'd like to address? Or do you want me to just read some of the questions?
Um, sorry, I'm looking at the chat now. Is there something in particular you thought I should respond to?
Sure. I think we have a great one. So this one's from Laura Lamouli and she said, when campaigning and particularly when speaking with individuals or tiny groups, do you find yourself mentioning or using social work, your social work background to explain the approaches that you take to various types of community issues and the knowledge and insight that you have? And when you do mention or emphasize your social work background, how do people respond?
You know, um, I, I, I don't actually. I, I rarely talk about, so this is, this is a macro social work issue. Um, in the field of social work, um, I have often been a critic. Um, with the NASW in particular, when, when Bob Schacter was, uh, was in charge here in the New York City chapter. Um, and as well with, with the deans of the various social work schools, NYU, Hunter and Columbia in particular. Um, I don't think that the social work field does a good enough job of promoting the wide breadth and variety of skills and, and strengths that the field contributes, um, both in terms of training and abilities and in terms of professions. Um, we don't do enough to break out of the idea that social workers only come in one form, clinical, you know, case management type social workers, which does a total disservice to the way in which that training and those skills actually lead to, um, much more effective management and leadership and executive abilities. Um, and so I've never felt like the fields, I, I was having this conversation with someone before this. I was sort of like, what do I do? What do I say? I've never felt like the field claimed me. Um, because I did not go down that path. I felt, you know, I, I remember sort of the, in a couple of years after graduating, you know, the, the focus was on, you know, the, the LA, the LCSW, like those kinds of, this, the, the clinical stuff, the meetings, all focused on that conversation. You know, as part of the NASW for a couple of years, the meetings all focused on that, those conversations. And I, as a woman of color, first generation woman of color, I've been othered enough in my life. Um, there, you know, there have been enough spaces where I tried to be, you know, whatever and was not, did not feel like there was a space for me. So to have the field of social work do that as well um, was really challenging for me, has been really challenging for me. And so I stopped actually trying to fit into that box. Um, and so, you know, while I don't have a problem claiming my roots in terms of how I think my social work education contributed to my skills as a leader, my ability to, um, assess group dynamics, to anticipate, um, challenges in a group, to intervene effectively. All of these things that I think are really powerful, you know, negotiation skills and compromising and all of that, you know, de-escalation and intervention, um, as well as balancing a budget and, you know, doing all the human resource stuff that one needs to do in terms of managing as a staff and a team. Um, and, you know, understanding how the infrastructure is going to impact how people feel valued in the workspace. Um, all of those things are valid, but not highlighted or elevated enough. Um, and so what ends up happening is I end up not claiming it. Uh, I don't, I'm not, you know, it, I, I don't have a problem talking about it, otherwise I wouldn't be here. Um, but it, it hasn't felt like a space that had a lane for me. Um, and so it's not often one of the things that I lead with in conversations, um, but I'm actually happy to be having that conversation here right now. I think this is, you know, this is a, a larger thing than this panel. It is the field. It is an issue and a, a challenge of the field. And I'm the one that's, you know, I've been banging that drum for a long, long time and people go, yeah, yeah, we're working on that. We're working on that. We want to, we want to change the image. Um, but we haven't quite mastered that yet. And I think that there's a lot of room for growth there.
Thank you so much, Diane, for that. I think that was very, very, um, very, there's a, there was very, it was very bold, but very true. Um, and I'll just piggyback off you really quickly and I would love for Pace to weigh in on this, um, part of the conversation. Um, so as I mentioned, I went to Columbia University like you, Diane, um, and I did major in policy. I definitely think that there was a, um, a lack of preparation as it relates to preparing us, preparing me in the policy field. Um, from my internships, which I absolutely adored, you know, I, I interned at Jewish Board of Family Church, uh, uh, excuse me, Jewish Board of Family Children's Services with Mary Pendergreen. And I was also at the Bronx Defenders. Um, however, I think that there was a lot of, um, sort of uncertainty about what type of assignments to, to give. The coursework didn't, didn't quite prepare me and the field. And I think even after there was sort of like that uncertainty of how do you get into policy, right? So you're sort of looking for these federal jobs and these, these state jobs, trying to figure out how do you fit in social work? So I think that, um, for me, it was very challenging. It was very challenging, um, like you said, Diane. And I think that it took me a while to find my place in social work. I, I would be, you know, remiss to say that I found it right away. I didn't. I, I probably say I'm just finding it about a year ago. Um, but it took a while to get there. And so I do, um, from what you're saying, Diane, just picking back off of that, I do believe that we do need to do a better job at preparing students, especially those that are younger than us, those that are, are, are new professionals going to the field that want to go into policy, want to go into public office. So Pace, I would love for you, Emilio, weigh in on this, especially as a new social worker. Talk to us, dear.
I'm like chomping at the bit, so don't worry about it. Um, I think there's just so much everybody has said that I definitely want to touch on. And just to stay on this topic, I wanted to just go directly to what Diane was saying about the profession as a whole. Um, cause I think, um, and I'll touch on also kind of like my journey because I think for me, kind of what I see now is that, um, there's a tension that comes up in every space for me and it's the tension of wanting a new system, but also having to navigate the current system that we have. You see that in criminal justice, right? So like if you're saying like, oh, we want justice, but then you're still sending the folks to the, you know, to the same places that we know are broken. Like we're not necessarily going to get us a different result. Um, and so with, with education and social work schools, I think it's the same thing. For example, like I would point to, you know, I'm very familiar with a number of social work programs. I went to Lehman College for graduate school and I was, I feel really blessed because Lehman's program is an advanced generalist perspective. And so they actually molded their program so that everybody gets a little bit of everything. And it's, it's a little different than Hunter because Hunter makes you choose your major at the beginning of your career. Like you don't even know anything else, like, okay, social services, social work. Okay, that's, that's what, what it is. Um, but it wasn't actually until like my, my last year in graduate school that I had a course on policy analysis. And the way that my teacher just broke it down for me of like, here's how to look at any policy and know whether it's good for, 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 for people or not, right? Like who is it helping? You know, how is it funded? Like what is it trying to do? And he just put it in such simple terms that I realized, you know, I think the skills that we are taught as social workers are applicable in a number of settings, right? So I think we focus so much on like helping the most vulnerable directly, one-on-one. But for example, like, you know, folks were saying the communication skills that it takes to talk to a client are the same communication skills that you need to run a campaign and to talk about the issue and to, um, really like connect emotionally with an audience, whether it's a group of people like this or whether it's over social media in this virtual space. Um, so, so that's kind of what I see. I think we need to go more towards this like generalist approach. Like everybody should try something so that they can, something can be triggered. Cause I do think that when it comes to politics, like everybody has a role, like some people, I've met people who don't want to be the face of it, but they would make excellent chief of staff. Um, and so like maybe you're like the data person, right? So you don't need to be the face to get involved in politics. Find that candidate that you support, that you would want to work for. Um, and like for me, like the only thing stopping me from running for office is immigration. So I grew up, you know, as a, as a dreamer, so I'm a, I'm a doctor recipient. Um, I'm a queer, you know, um, social worker. So, um, when I walk into spaces, I also bring a lot of communities with me that people are not used to dealing with. And so I got, a lot of what I get is like, that's not how things work or like you need to like slow your roll. And I'm just like, no, like this is what would work. You just don't want to do the work that it would take to get there. And so I think that's a lot of the reframing that politics needs, right? Like enough of this, like this is how we've always done it and that this is just how it is, right? So I think, um, but then like that tension is still there, right? Like how do you create the new system that you want to see while you're still in the old system? And I don't really have an answer to that. Um, so, so yeah, I definitely, I'm speaking from the heart. I see that in the chat. And, and this is also kind of like, um, I guess the, the last point I want to make is like, leadership is not just about, um, like the, like this, like scale is important, but I think also like, like I was saying, everybody has a place. So like there's leadership that's needed in NASW, for example. I think a lot of people have been fleeing as opposed to like tackling the work. I'm the kind of person that like, likes a challenge. Um, so even though I've only been out of grad school for a couple of years, I really feel like I have a clear vision of, of what we need to do. So I would love anybody that's interested in that as well.
Thank you so much, Emilio. And I am also a proud board member of the NASW. I also co-chair the Professionals Committee and open call if anyone is interested in joining, we would love to have you. I, I want to, um, bring Susan into this conversation. Um, you know, you, we talked a lot about the challenges of not necessarily preparing um, students for macro and policy fields. Can you tell us what are some opportunities that Fordham University may have underway or maybe exploring in the future?
Well, the new curriculum that, that was just launched in, uh, 2018, uh, gives the students the opportunity to pick what they want once they get done the general's year. So you can, they're all called selectives. So you can literally pick from them as long as you pick one in each of the buckets, like one research, one policy, uh, one clinical. You know, then, then you can play. It creates an environment that students can really pursue their passions as they develop them. You know, obviously if we, when I went through the program, it was You know, obviously, if we, when I went through the program, it was very stepwise progression from A to Z. And you couldn't wander around too much. And being with the online program, it doesn't matter where the class is held, it's online, so everybody has full access to it. So that's the big way that Fordham is embracing that kind of multi-dimensional perspective. I mean, we really, I, I love, Shaniqua, that you said that you found policy and fell in love. I teach policy. That's amazing. To get social workers to embrace policy, because policy is scary. Policy requires a lot of little steps that you put together so you can get from here to there. And it's not easy. It's not clean. And it's, it's amazing when you fall in love with it.
Thank you so much for that, Susan. Assemblywoman, I would love for you to come to jump in as part of the conversation. So you, you, your journey and, and your pathway into, to the assembly, it sounds like it was almost like a call-in for you too. I'd be very interested in, in what particular experiences or skills you feel like you've been utilizing as it relates to social work and your position in the assembly.
Thank you so much for that, Shaniqua. And I'm really enjoying this conversation, by the way. Really, I'm going to echo what has been said before me. I think a lot of people said it best some minutes ago. You know, I frankly have been utilizing everything. One of the reasons why I love social work so much is it has empowered me. It has empowered me as a daughter of Haitian immigrants, first generation born here in the United States. I feel powerful when I am reminded of all the things that I can do as a social worker. And I often refer to it as a toolkit. A toolkit from A to Z, where at any given point I could go in and I can be versatile. It helps me be a very good listener, a negotiator, being able to de-escalate situations of tension, being able to put myself in other people's shoes, bringing empathy to the table, being able to understand where people are coming from, realizing that we may look differently, but we all have similar needs. We all want to be respected. We all want to have dignity. It's helped me become an advocate, being able to speak up for people who are afraid to speak for themselves. And, you know, going back to this idea of social work education, some of you here may not know this, but if any of my students are watching, they're probably laughing because this is like my, my big issue now. I've become sort of like a one-woman crusader, taking this issue on. In the midst of my very, very busy schedule as it is, I've been finding time to make this a personal mission of mine and having one-on-one conversations with schools of social work about their respective curricula. The reason why I'm doing that is it goes back to something that was said earlier, this idea, you know, from the beginning, I should be clear to those watching, we've always had this sort of tension, this sort of internal behind-the-scenes tension of our twin missions, as it's been called in the literature. We have always simultaneously tried to help people with their individual problems, their individual suffering and the plight of people on a human individual level, while also trying to better society and deal with structural changes. And we see that today where people are either like, you know, it's like Camp A or Camp B. But I think that we need more people now speaking up and saying it doesn't have to be either or. So even if you're a clinical social worker, which is fantastic, as am I, my training has always been in clinical social work. My PhD, I wrote my dissertation in mental health, mental health of African-Americans. I was a minority mental health fellow, like I'm totally in when it has to do with mental health. But what we can't have are hundreds and hundreds of students graduating programs saying that I only know clinical social work. I don't know anything else. And that we don't even have a basic, basic rolodex of, of language, of concept of information about social justice. So I just want to sort of insert this idea tonight that the foundation of it all, whether you're doing the individual route, you're doing clinical, whether you're doing macro, meso, policy, et cetera, we always, you know, the social justice and advocacy should be our North Star. And we all need to have that literacy in those things. So I want to agree with Diane, our schools are not measuring up. One of the things that I've done is I've spoken to schools. I'm really proud to have even designed some elective courses for some of the schools here in New York City in my spare time, while I, while I have some extra time. I realized that some of the schools didn't have advocacy courses, didn't have social justice courses. I say this with a lot of humility, because I'm just really happy that I was able to do this, you know, to, to design and teach some of these first courses in advocacy and social justice. I also teach another course that I designed, political social work for advocacy and social change. This is my second or third time teaching that now. And the students say, oh my God, no one is telling us this, you know, no one's talking about political social work as even like a viable option for us. And then the first day of class, I'm like, well, look, there are sixteen domains of social work. You could be doing clinical or this or that, but no one is showing us that whole list and saying you can do any one of these things.
I'm, I just, you're, hearing you, Assemblywoman, is literally music to my ears. I was just, I was really like soaking in everything that you were saying. Congratulations for designing those courses. It is, that is, that is groundbreaking and so needed in our schools of social work. And I'm, I'm really hopeful in, in where we're going as, as a profession, especially those that have come after us that, you know, weren't necessarily, didn't, we didn't necessarily get to have that direct experience. And maybe we didn't benefit directly from that in school, but, but those that are coming after us will. So I appreciate that. Thank you so much. And I know you're on the legislative floor, so if you need to excuse yourself or anything, we totally understand.
I decided to put it on my phone, so I'm multi, I'm trying to stay here as long as I can.
That's the social work spirit.
Trying to have it all.
We're master.
You know, I think Tricia had her hand up.
Yes, Trish, of course.
I just really wanted to add one piece to this, which is that I ask, and I, I'm so on board. And I think it's amazing that we, that we are adding more of this into our education. But I frankly think that, that representation matters with this and that, that we need to see social workers in different fields, more so. We need to, we, we really do. I, we need to see social workers. We need to see social workers not, not just doing clinical work and not just in a hospital setting, but we frankly need to see the social workers more so in our legislative chambers. We need, and, and when you see that, that's when you start to really change, that's really when you start to change the expectations of where, of where people expect to see you and, and expected to do that work. So yes, to, yes, to making those educate, those changes in our educational fields, yes, to shifting, shifting how students are thinking about their careers and their professions. But I, you know, I never wanted, I never wanted also forget, though, that, that at the end of the day, we need, we actually need social workers who are in the Park, Department of Parks and Rec. We need social workers who are in, who are in, in City Hall. We need social workers who are in Albany. We need social workers who are there so that, so that we are giving our students and people who are entering into this field something to, to look, look at and to see themselves there. So just to, just to echo that, I, I think that representation matters here.
Yes. Diane, did you want to jump in there?
Yeah, I want to, I want to just put a exclamation point emphasis on Tricia's comment as I segue to, to say goodbye. I am, I'm, I'm just deeply grateful to have been part of this group and this conversation. I appreciate the, the depth of, of it and the richness of it. And I appreciate each and every one of you and the roles that you play, no matter where you are in the field of social work. I think the most important sort of takeaway from this conversation is that, you know, a, a real social worker can actually do anything. And we just have to amplify that message. So thank you all so much. Be well, stay safe. I appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you. And that, that brings us, we, we had a really great conversation. I know we had a lot of questions that were coming in, but we are coming to the close. We have just a few more moments together. And I did want us to sort of leave with a call to action. As you know, when we're in these kind of spaces, having these conversations are always very crucial and important. But, you know, we also have to, to lead with, with, with some tangible action steps, or at least what we, we hope or plan to do as social workers. So Abigail, I'll let you lead the call to action part. Each of us can take a few moments and in our closing, talk about what our call and action will be as social workers that are running for office and how we're going to continue to amplify the field of social work and public office.
Well, as Tricia said, it is, it is better for social workers as a whole when social workers get into office. Representation does matter to have social workers in other professions and, and have people see social workers at a leadership level is so important. And so our call to action is we're asking all of you to support us in our efforts to run for city council, to run for mayor. And the way that you can support us is through volunteering with our campaigns, making monetary contributions, spreading the word, following us on social media, cheering us on, reaching out to our campaigns through our websites. We can put those in the chat. But helping us get to a place where we can represent our districts, move New York City forward is, is our call to action this evening.
Thank you so much, Abigail. And we did have a question coming in. I thought it was, I definitely think of the new school sort of conversations we're going to before we fully close and asks to Assemblymember. And that is what advice can you give to the first-time candidates? So what advice can you give us?
Uh, yeah, thank you so much for that question. I mean, I, I shudder. I don't want to sound cliche, but it's probably some nuggets that you've probably heard before. But the first one is just to really believe in yourself. And I say that as someone who knows what it's like when people are just looking at you and making assumptions about what you can and cannot do. And so the fact that you're here running is really exciting, because obviously you sort of crossed that hurdle. So having that inner strength, believing that you are worthy of running, that you can run right now, you can do this. And then I would say, secondly, really being in tune with the district that you're seeking to represent. This work can get very heady and it can sort of allow you to sort of get lost in like one aspect of it or another aspect of it. And a lot of times we're busy, we're organizing, we're looking at paperwork. I've seen candidates that walk around with like, you know, a binder under their arms and they're kind of like forgetting the basics of the people. You know, the grandmothers, the young voters, the people of all ages, talking to people in community centers, going to houses of worship and really making sure that you have the pulse of the people. And do they want you to run? What do they believe? Like what is your relationship with them? What kind of, you know, support do you have, you know, from the community? That's really, really important. I don't want to get on my soapbox now, but I've just, you know, being here in New York City, you see a lot of people running for different reasons. But at the end of the day, it's about a district which needs representation and you are auditioning for that job. And so it's really about you being in touch with people to make sure that you can connect with them, understand what they're looking for, and really being able to grow a coalition, a groundswell of support from the district that you're looking to represent, as well as people outside of the district.
Wow, thank you so much. And one of the things that resonates with me, Assemblywoman, is pulse of the people. That really, really resonated with me. Having the pulse of the people is so important. Being connected to our communities and really understanding what their needs are, right? Not coming with our, our set of agenda and motives, but really sitting down and hearing out what our movers, what our district, what they need, what their needs are. That was really important. So we're, we're, we're closing, but I wanted to give every one of us an opportunity in one minute to just give us a closing statement. Tell us what your call and action will be. How are you going to continue pushing forward social work and public office? Whatever you want to leave with us tonight, we're going to give you one minute. So I'll start with Tricia. And then we'll go to Engrid, Abigail, I will go after, and then we'll have our organizations go. So Tricia, you have the floor.
Oh, man, a big shoes to fill after the Assemblymember. But really, I, I just, I, I hope that if you are a social worker, if you are thinking about wanting to have, be closer in the world of policy, if you're thinking about wanting to see, talk about systems and, and changing these larger issues, then you should unapologetically do so. Expect to, expect to see yourself in places that our social workers have not traditionally been. You belong there. You are qualified. You are capable of being there. You do not need another degree. You do not need extra years of experience. You do not need to work for an elected official for several years in order to be completely qualified and able to advocate effectively for your communities. At the end of the day, that is, that is, that is, that is what I ask that you do. I would love your support and I would love you to, to join me in some way in doing this. But if you, if you never find yourself on the Upper East Side or Roosevelt Island, if you find yourself in some other area, then I hope that you, that you make room at the table for yourself and other social workers and for those who are most vulnerable. You are completely capable and are completely qualified just in, just in your training as a social worker. Because as you've heard tonight, you were given all the tools necessary in order to do the job. That is the, the true message that I'd like to leave you all with. I hope that you do support these candidates and myself included. I hope that you do help change what it means to what an elected official looks like in our city. And, and if, if I can be of any help in this, I hope that you'll take my contact information down, because I'm, I am deeply committed to not only fighting for my community and fighting for the constituents and families and seniors and small businesses that are in my neighborhood. I'm deeply also committed to making sure that, that I'm, I'm making room at the table for others. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Tricia. Engrid?
Yes, hi. So I want to thank Shaniqua and Abigail, Assemblymember Matilde Frontis, who disappeared, I guess she had to go to N A S W Pace, also Social Work Boats. I am really deeply honored to be amongst all of you. I want to say, you know, echo the same sentiments as Tricia and as Assemblymember Frontis, you know. This is a big responsibility you take on when you are a social worker. You know, people really depend on you. They trust you. They're, they're looking for your help at their most vulnerable, you know. And so I think that multiply it, you know, magnify that, you know, ten, twenty, thirty times. And that's what we are, are trying to do, right? We are trying to help not just an individual family, but in a community. And our communities can range from like a hundred and forty thousand people to a hundred and seventy or more. So I think that it is tremendously big responsibility to run for office, a tremendously big responsibility to represent it in elected office. But we really have so much power if we are elected. We have the purse and the power of the city council. We can enact so many changes. And I think a lot of folks don't really see, right? What does a city council member do? So, you know, city, and we're just going to brief education. City mem, a city council member is deciding how an eighty billion dollar budget, right, is apportioned throughout their, throughout the entire city and in their district in particular. A city council member legislates. So from bike lanes to schools, to how the streets are fixed, you know, to how many parks, you know, we have cleaned up, et cetera. These are all different things that the city council focuses on. And so it is an important thing to, to really study, to really do your research as to who is going, who you want to represent in your community, because that is a big responsibility. And I really do hope that whoever's out there, whether you're a social work student or not, that you really do see us and you see yourself in us. You know, we're, we're women of color. We're women of all shades here. We decided to step up and say, you know what? Our community really needs the skills that we bring to the table, the kind of like acceptance of, of diversity and the kind of vision that we have for a better city, because we all are hopeful. Otherwise, we wouldn't be here. We wouldn't be here speaking to you all about how we can add to, to this beautiful, dynamic city. We can add so much. And so again, thank you, everyone. And please do follow me on social media, gomisforqueens.com. Insta social, sorry, Insta Facebook, same thing, gomisforqueens.com. Thank you and good night.
Thank you so much, Engrid. Abigail?
You know, the other thing that city council does is constituent services within your district.
You know, the other thing that city council does is constituent services within your district. And that, that's, that's social workers, that's our wheelhouse. Constituent services, that's when somebody calls up the office and says, I'm having a problem with my neighbor. My sidewalk is broken. Somebody keeps beeping at the stoplight that's out front. My landlord is harassing me, right? And social workers, that's, that's from day one. Our first-year placements are often working with, with people to address those micro-level problems. So again, why social workers are a good fit for office, city council in particular. We have the vision to create legislation. We have the temperament to build relationships and move this city forward. And we have the knowledge of how to get things done in city agencies. So I will leave you with that.
Thank you so much, Abigail. I'll go next. We have gone through so much in the past year with COVID. We've been hit, especially the most vulnerable, our neighborhoods have been hit tremendously. It's amplified the oppression of, of people of color. It's amplified racism that we've always known has been here for so many centuries in our country. And it's brought it really to the forefront. So I'm committed to really uplifting the voices of the community that I live in, that I call home and that I serve. I'm, I'm committed to finding ways to really dismantle systems of racism that, that have been implicit and sustained for so many centuries in our country. I'm committed to finding ways to bring in quality education for our Black and Brown students who don't have access to these resources. I'm also, you know, was a product of public school education, so know firsthand what that is. I'm committed to fighting for affordable housing in my district because I see that people are not able to pay the rent and they're not able to live. So my commitment to social work and to this is really to continue doing it with, with leading, with all my passion, all of my skills and confidently and serving my district with, with full integrity and transparency. So that is my commitment. I am going to move it along to Emilio or Berla, whoever wants to answer, and then we'll close with Susan.
All right. I will say that if I know, if I was not a member of PACE, I would not even know about the political aspect of social work. So my call to action is really for social workers to go to, you know, leadership position, just like Assemblywoman Frontes. You know, if you are not qualified for that position, take more trainings. But what I will really want to say is like join a professional organization like NASW and make sure that you are a member of PACE. Because being at the table gives you perspective of really what is happening and you can have your voice being heard. So that's my call to action is like, you know, be in the foot line and join an organization and like, you know, go and do some work on the street, on the ground, like political action work. That's my call to action.
Thank you so much for that. Emilio, did you want to tag in here?
I'll just echo that. I think also there's like leadership positions within NASW, community boards, educational boards, mutual aid groups, nonprofit organizations. There's so many, there's so much work to be done. Even if political office isn't for you, there must be something that you can do. So that's, that's my call to action. Find, find that purpose.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Emilio. And Susan, last but certainly not least.
Goodness, you know, as I finish up my PhD, I'm, I'm truly inspired. I came here today to, to listen to this conversation because I would like to be more involved. And I think Berla, you said it, you need to be at the table. You need to, to step up and, and be involved. And I find that as I'm at GSS and I'm involved in the curriculum, I'm really, I'm inspired to kind of go back and think about this from a different perspective and how can we inspire the school to think about the curriculum in a, in a more expansive, policy-driven, social advocate lens. I just thank you all for inspiring me and, and I hope that I get to see all of you elected to your offices.
Thank you so much, Susan. And we're going to have Abigail close, but before we have Abigail close, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank all of my fellow colleagues and social workers whom I adore and think that, that everything of you. I want to wish all of you good luck in your races. As we have our victory to city council, we have, we have a lot of work ahead of us. And I, and I truly believe our city will be much better with us in office. So I celebrate all of you for running, for your bravery and for all that you bring to the table. Happy Social Work Month, and I'll let Abigail close.
Oh, thanks. I think I'm going to close with my favorite line from this evening, which is that we are the guard for human rights. It's, it's in the fabric of our training. It's in the fabric of our being. Social workers, that is our role. That is what we will bring to city council. And I am very hopeful for the future, the future of New York City, the future of our country, quite honestly. So that's what we're going to close on. Thank you all so much for the support. Thank you to the organizations for coming out for us. We really appreciate it. Always good to see my fellow social workers and have a good week, everybody. Oh, and you know what? Ingrid mentioned, so in terms of helping us, we are in petitioning. Petitioning ends this weekend and we do need your help. We need to get as many signatures as possible. The minimum is 270. We want to blow that out of the water. Come help us do that, please. If you live close to any of us, just sign up on our website, send us an email, send us a DM, whatever it is, just reach out to us and help us. I know I have a huge petitioning day on Saturday lined up, so please join us. Thank you so much.
Abigail, that's a great way to end. If you're interested in getting involved in any of our campaigns, you can see our links to our website there. Feel free to reach out. We'd be more than happy to have you helping us a part of the team. Again, thank you so much all for joining us. We wish you a wonderful, wonderful evening. Happy Social Work Month. We hope to see you again.
Thank you. Bye, everyone.
Bye, everyone.